Called the meeting to order. So, since we're not voting on anything, I don't think the quorum requirement is relevant to this meeting. We're not voting on anything. All right. Are there any questions about any items on the February 18th agenda? All right. Let's go through the preview of the items on the March 3rd agenda. The first one is the issuance of resolution approving limited obligation bonds and financing documents, and Don Ward's going to present this item.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to give you a quick heads up on what will be coming your way on the 3rd. As I told you at the last presentation on February 4th, the next step would be the issuance, or not so, the issuance, but the approval of the resolution for the issuance of the bond. So, the approving resolution, basically, it establishes the official statement and names the chairman of the board and myself and the county manager as representatives of the county to act on behalf of this. So, you'll be seeing that as well as a full presentation and an update on the projects on the 3rd. Happy to answer any questions if you had any.
All right. Thanks, Don.
All right. I'll see you then.
See you then. All right. Next up, secondary public safety answering point, addendum to IGA with the city of Asheville, and Taylor Jones is going to help us out with this one. For some reason.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Brooke Haslett. I'm the Buncombe County 911 manager. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of our emergency services director due to my historical knowledge on this particular topic.
Great.
So, I wanted to present some information on the third addendum to the 911 call center intergovernmental agreement with Asheville City. The original intergovernmental agreement was signed in 2003 and established a consolidated public safety communication center by the year 2006. The first addendum to that agreement was signed in 2006 and extended that original timeline for one year. The second addendum was signed in 2009 and created a joint agreement for operations of the communication center. This made the county responsible for the cost of all 911 equipment to answer and dispatch 911 calls within the center. In 2016, the North Carolina 911 board made the county aware that our center was considered co-located and not consolidated. This meant that our expenses could no longer be reported together. They had to be split per agency. In fiscal 19, the cost for the Asheville City Police Department to answer and dispatch 911 calls was $178,000. Zero percent of those expenses were eligible for reimbursement from the state. Buncombe County covered the entire cost from the general fund. If Asheville City had been established as a secondary public safety answering point through the state, we could have recovered $140,000 of those dollars.
So, the slide says that we will receive that, but you're saying we won't because of the way it's structured?
Correct.
If it were structured differently, then we would get the $140,000, but we're not currently going to get it?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So, the third addendum allows Buncombe County to be reimbursed for money that's already paid for 911 equipment used by the Asheville Police Department to answer and dispatch 911 calls. The 911 funds do not cover any kind of salary or personnel cost. It's strictly for the equipment and phone lines to take and dispatch 911. The city of Asheville would become a secondary PSAP, and the 911 board would transfer those secondary PSAP funds to the county to cover those costs. Asheville City Council approved this addendum on January 28th, 2020, and the request for action from the board will be on March 3rd. Any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the school justice partnership agreement, and DK is going to help us out with this item.
Commissioners, I'm really excited to share with you that on your March agenda, our chief judge, Hill, will be coming to present to you information related to the school to justice partnership. The school to justice partnership is initiative through the North Carolina Administrative Office of Courts. What that office has asked is that, over time, all 100 counties in North Carolina convene a school to justice partnership. That partnership includes multiple community stakeholders, including the school districts, law enforcement, and government, and the judiciary to work together to talk about some of the issues with student misconduct in our school districts and work to minimize the number of expulsions, suspensions, in-school arrests, and things of that sort. Basically, I think we all agree that students should be in school and not in the court system. So, as a part of that, Judge Hill will come and talk about and ask our board to support a memorandum of agreement for this group to share data, to come up with strategies to reduce those exclusionary discipline factors. On the 3rd, he'll come and he'll present that, and he's asking our chair, Chair Newman, as well as county manager Pender, to sign off on that agreement.
Okay, great. And that's also being anticipated to be signed by the city and county schools and the sheriff's department and the courts. So, all these different parties will be signing this.
Yeah, it's a long list of folks that they would like to support this initiative, including city of Asheville and the county.
Great. Thanks for that update. Yeah, I got an email with the request that we sign it, so I just wanted the whole commission to be aware of it and look at it before we do that. Terrific. All right. Next up is the French Broad River MPO presentation, and Matt Cable and Tristan Winkler are here to talk to us about this item.
As Matt is coming, I'll just mention briefly that this was brought up by Commissioner Belcher at the last meeting, just to understand what the MPO does. So, we've branded this like MPO 101. That will take you back what that means.
Right. That was basically what I was going to just mention is where we were last time at the meeting, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tristan, because he's going to walk you through just the general structure of the MPO, kind of how they function, what their purposes are, and give you a breakdown of membership and other information. So, I'll turn it over to Tristan.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for bringing up the presentation. So, my name is Tristan Winkler. I'm director of the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization. I think, generally speaking, we're known for speaking in acronyms and complicated transportation parlance, but I'll try to keep it simple today with what we've got called transportation planning in a nutshell. So, very generally speaking, what an MPO is, it's the forum for cooperative transportation decision-making for a metropolitan planning area. And for our area, we cover roughly four different counties. Most of Buncombe, all of Henderson, a large chunk of Haywood, a little bit of Madison County around the Mars Hill area, and a tiny little bit of Transylvania County. That is the planning area. That is the area the MPO is responsible for transportation planning efforts. And just to point out, that planning boundary is largely based on what the U.S. Census designates as the urbanized area. So, we're required to take in the urbanized area as well as areas that are likely to urbanize in the near future. And so, one of the really simple kind of ways to put it, and why do we need regional transportation planning, especially in a region like ours, there, it's really hard to define who should have the say over the roads. Our roads are seeing more and more cross-county commuters from every single county. From Henderson County to Buncombe County, there's more than 12,000 people per day that commute. Going from Buncombe to Henderson, it's around 9,000 per day, and we've seen those numbers increase every single year from 2002. In Madison County, it's actually, they have more people who commute to Buncombe than work and live within their own county. And so, and just keep in mind that those are just trips made for employment. That doesn't include trips made for healthcare, for services, just for, you know, going out to eat, something like that. And so, maintaining a regional transportation network needs to be a regional conversation, and a big reason of why we exist is making sure that the local governments are in communication with DOT to communicate priorities, as well as federal highways and transit agencies. And so, our job, again, is to develop that forum, make sure that forum's there, so that people can maintain communications. We can develop priorities together as a region. And the way our MPO works, the way I say it at every single orientation, is I, as staff, am not the MPO. Our board is the MPO. And our board receives input from our TCC or our Technical Coordinating Committee, which is made up of local staff, as well as DOT staff. And we also have a number of other subcommittees that feed into that. And we're also responsible for getting public comment on the items going before the MPO. Our board makeup, every single local jurisdiction within the MPO planning boundary is on our MPO board, but for the largest jurisdictions, Buncombe County, Asheville, as well as Henderson County, they receive two board seats. Every other jurisdiction has one board seat, and we also have four at-large seats and three non-voting seats. Just to point out, that is a very, very large board. I believe we have the largest board of any MPO in the state. In terms of our funding, 80% of our funding comes from federal sources. Essentially, what we do is manage a federal grant that's provided for regional transportation planning. That grant, however, requires that 20% of the funding come from local sources. So, for us, the local dues, as we call them, is split up amongst dues-paying members based on the population from the 2010 census. And to get a little bit into the acronyms, some of the things that we do are to oversee some of the federal transportation funding programs. That includes the Surface Transportation Block Grant, sorry, SDBGDA. Those are federal funds that come directly to the MPO for programming. We have programmed more than $35 million in the six years I've been here, 14 of which have gone towards projects in Buncombe County or being administered by Buncombe County. Transportation Alternatives Program, that's a smaller program that's largely geared towards bicycle and pedestrian projects, as well as several pots of federal transportation funds. And so, very generally speaking, a lot of what we're charged with doing is taking transportation projects from concept to being funded and constructed. Taking just, you know, when people say someone needs to fix that road, to what does that fix actually look like, and making sure that our local government's priorities are being incorporated into the designs NC DOT is making. And I've tried to translate our numerous plans, the CTP, the MTP, but while we have a lot of planning efforts going on, very simply, again, all we're trying to do is figure out what are the priorities to maintain a functioning regional transportation network, and how do we bring that to fruition? So, that's all I've got for you guys today. Do you have any questions?
So, one of the reasons that I mentioned this last time is, you know, we have some folks on the board that serve on the MPO, and I know that it's been very helpful in getting some projects done, but, you know, lately, there's not been, I mean, I'll go about two weeks and I'll get an email about this monster project that's going somewhere. And the first thing I hear, and it is true, that the roads are terrible and we've got too much traffic on them, so... And I think if we can take this conversation beyond this presentation, I'd love to see something presented in the main meeting so that people can understand, and that I can understand, how Sardis Road ends up as a project, when people, you know, ask me about it all the time. And to say it's on the list is not a sufficient answer to constituent. So, how we fund those, so that when these projects come up, that we can actually say whether or not this road will handle that. And so, I want to try to see if we can kind of connect the dots from the work that the MPO does, and the MPO does a lot of work, and it's a lot of great work, and just want to make sure that we're able to communicate that to our constituents, because it seems like that the, you know, the big roads get all the publicity, you know, in Buncombe County, I-26, or the connector, or whatever it is. And there are other places that people struggle with and wonder why something's not happening here. So, as a board, if we can help communicate that to the public, so that they understand how these dots are connected, and even if it's, you know, providing, you know, connectivity in, you know, in South Asheville, or West Asheville, or wherever, that we can provide more information from this board to the constituents, so that when projects come up, or when we're looking to see, you know, how many we can possibly do over the next five years, what can we handle? That we have more information and more communication. That's not, you know, I'm talking to you, but that's more probably directed to the county manager and just... I doubt there's any commissioner that has a problem with anything I just said, because more information out there is very, very helpful, and most people don't realize what, you know, how much y'all do, and how connecting. I saw one of the grants up there. Oh, gosh. Can you go back to the, go back to the acronyms for me? Just real quick, and I'll be brief, I promise. Okay, right there. The Surface Transportation Block Grant, I believe that's the grant that was part of the funding for the Buncombe County Sports Park. Is that right? Did we receive some of that? Brownie, am I correct? Okay. And so...
I think that is from that funding source.
For the Greenway, along the Harmony Creek, yeah, there's about $6 million of SDBG funds for that project.
Okay. And that's, I mean, that's obviously a big deal to the community there, and to understand how that, you know, work was done through advocacy and availability of that grant, you know, is good information. But I think, you know, as we look at the growth in Buncombe County, as we have infrastructure discussions, you know, people have questions about certain roads, and I think we need to be able to provide that information from your board to this board and then get it out to the community. So, thanks.
So, Tristan, could you talk a little bit more about how...
So, if people want to get more information about upcoming transportation improvement projects in the county, what's the best process for them to go through to learn more?
So, we've recently updated our website. That's one place, frenchbroadrivermpo.org. We have an interactive map that shows projects that are funded in the MPO planning region. That includes major highway improvements such as I-26, which people talk a lot about, but also...
They talk more about Sardis Road where I live. I'm just telling them.
We've received, we received a number of comments about that road as well, but that's another funded project in the region. So, that includes interstates, as well as secondary roads, US NC routes, any improvement project on those, as well as bicycle and pedestrian projects in the region.
And it has, so anything over the next five or six years is going to show what the expected funded projects are? And does it have a schedule for when, you know, the sequence of when those different projects are expected to be implemented?
Correct. There is a schedule on the MPO website that shows when right-of-way is scheduled to occur, right-of-way acquisition, as well as construction. We'll also be starting a process later this month known as prioritization. And so, that's the process where we go through, we submit projects to the state and work with the state to determine what are the next round of projects to be funded. So, later this month, we'll be updating our website, again, with an interactive map, as well as materials for the public to look at the list of priority projects in the MPO. And that'll be out for public comment in late February and March, and that'll go before our board in February as well as March.
So, do we have, I know we have a way to do it. It'd be good to connect your website to our website. You know, I'm just thinking out loud, and, you know, I don't have any really, I'm thinking about communication, you know, communications department, being able to kind of keep this information out in front of the public, because, I mean, this conversation is going to be ongoing. You know, growth is, I mean, it's just here, but people need to know that if it's a, you know, I-26 connector, or if it's a part of Sardis Road, or if, you know, in wherever, they need to be able to have access to that information. It's pretty calming to know once something's approved. And people need to understand, this is vote-driven on the MPO. That's why you have to balance the members to make sure that, I mean, it goes all over the district. So...
We really appreciate that. You know, we know, especially in terms of interacting with the public, it's hard when the first thing you have to do is explain what an MPO is and does before you can start to get more information from them or give them more information. So, one of our big initiatives has been trying to be more out in the public, and some of our public surveys, I think, are starting to reflect that. When I first started, we had 12 people respond during the prioritization process. During our last public survey, we had more than 2,500 people. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, but honestly, the more our member governments help spread the word and help put that message out, it's all the more helpful to us and, I think, the public.
And I think our community centers that we have, too, is a good place to kind of get out there, but, you know, there's a lot of different ways to get this communication out. I just want to see it out there more, so that people understand what's actually happening or going, as Brownie said, in the next five years, what should happen if we have the funding for it. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. Tristan, thanks for coming, and, you know, and I'd also just encourage anybody who wants to learn more to go to the, go to the MPO meetings, and there's, you know, there's, in addition, all the information on the website there. So, all the DOT, the federal highway staff are all there, and they give regular updates about kind of what's happening right now, you know, for the projects that are going to get built over the next year or so, like which ones have started, which ones are going to start. And, you know, most of these projects take a while to build, and so, it's, if you really want to learn more about what's happening in the near future, there's great kind of ongoing updates at the meetings. So, and all the meeting dates are on the MPO, French Broad River MPO website, too. All right. That's everything that was on our agenda. Are there other items that people would like to talk about? We are kind of ahead of schedule for a change. So, I've got one, but does anybody else have any other items? All right. Well, the one other item I wanted to, well, actually, I do have a question about the meeting tonight, one agenda meeting tonight question. Avril, so we have on the agenda this evening to talk about the employee group health insurance policy changes. Is there, who's going to present on that item? Okay. And are they going to do a presentation, or do you know what they're going to share?
They're talking about some benefits as well of what an HR is.
But they'll have some information to share in terms of the walk-through, because the stuff, the information on the website's pretty short, but they'll have some additional information they'll go through during the meetings. Okay. Terrific. All right. The one other item I wanted to just kind of talk about, if we've had some extra time today, which we do, is a topic of, I think, great interest in our community, long-term and currently. So, there have been some discussions between members of our commission. Commissioner Belcher and I have been in some of these meetings. Jasmine Beachrara and I have been in some meetings, and the city council members and legislators and people in the public have been talking about, have been talking about the local Buncombe County hotel occupancy tax issue, and possible changes to that tax. And so, I just kind of wanted to share a few updates from my perspective on it. This is ultimately an issue that, if there's going to be changes to it, requires changes to a state law, a local bill. You know, we have a Buncombe County hotel occupancy law now, which prescribes how the tax works. But there, I think there's, there's real interest in an effort to change the law in several ways. And so, I just wanted to share a few of my personal thoughts on this. While our legislators are the ones who would have to make the decision about whether to take it up, you know, I think that they would be interested in what the, you know, how it affects the city council and the county commission. So, it's something we could have input on if we want to. The, you know, and I think this is a topic of, you know, very strong interest in the community as well. Tourism is a huge part of our economy. It's become a much bigger part of our economy in the last five or six years as we've seen this unprecedented surge in visitation and hotel construction, especially in the downtown area of Asheville. And, you know, while I think everyone acknowledges that tourism brings a lot of benefits to the community, you know, it's grown so much, I think there's a lot of concerns about some of the, you know, challenges it creates as well. And the tourism tax is financially a big deal. It now generates $25 million a year in Buncombe County, which I think per capita, I don't think, maybe some coastal community, but no one else is even close to us in North Carolina in terms of how much it generates for a community of our size. And under the current state law, so some of us were here five years ago when we talked about this. Mr. Belcher, Mr. Whitesides were...
No, I wasn't.
No, you were not. You were not yet. No, so it was Holly and Miranda and...
Me and you.
You and I, and Ellen and Mike. That's right. And David Gant. So, the hotel tax was last updated about five years ago. It required the county commission to vote on it for it to go into effect, the changes to go into effect, and we had a very robust debate about it. It passed on a divided vote, and I think it was the only one that Holly and Miranda and I all voted the same way on, when other people differed, so it was, it was great. The, everyone, you know...
You would not want to vote, to bet on that.
You could not have predicted it. So, you know, the tax change two years ago increased the hotel tax from 4% to 6%, and it prescribed that the new revenue generated from it would go 75% to advertising, 25% to infrastructure projects, what's known as the Tourism Product Development Fund. And I think that was the biggest point of, you know, for those of us, I think, I think we were all in agreement that we were comfortable seeing the tax increase. I think the main point of debate was how the funds should be invested. And, you know, I felt like we should invest more in the community infrastructure part, less in advertising. I think some of the folks who voted for it, I don't want to speak for people, I think some people felt like, well, I probably agree with you, but, you know, the legislature passed it as it is, and, you know, it's, it may not be possible to change it. So, anyway, it went into effect, but I think partly because of community, you know, I think there's also a lot of community support for more infrastructure investment and other needs. I think there is, the hotel industry has indicated some openness to making changes. City council supports it. I think it's, you know, a lot of voices are calling for some changes to it. And that's what some of these conversations have been about recently, but the short session is coming up soon, so if we're going to kind of lend our voice to this process in the hopes of... to this process in the hopes of actually getting a bill passed this spring, then, you know, the time's coming up to do that. So I, I, I've been, I've been trying to kind of put some of my thoughts down on paper here with us today. I've, I've written up a letter that outlines kind of my thoughts on this. And I've wanted to share this to kind of, you know, facilitate conversation about this. The key point, the key policy points that I see that I think are still out there to be, to see if we can get some, enough agreement on them. The local hotel industry is indicating that they are supportive of going to, from 75-25 split to 66-33, which is really kind of what we were advocating for five years ago. If we'd gotten the change that we wanted then, I think it lands in a place very similar to that. So it kind of does go back to that.
When you say "we," you're talking about those that voted against it, or you're thinking of...
So, 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 right. So if, and this is kind of, I think it's honestly just kind of a coincidence, but I, five years ago, I think the position I was advocating for was that the new revenue would be split 50-50 rather than 75-25. The proposed updated legislation would take the entire 6% and would allocate it 66-33, which if we had done 50-50 five years ago, it actually would have made the overall formula 66-33. So it just kind of coincidentally lands in that, in that same place. But, because the 50-50 five years ago was only on the new 2%, right? So it didn't change the, the other parts of it. You know, I personally really think that with the incredible growth of this fund, that most people would support allocating more money for community investment rather than advertising. And I would certainly support that. You know, through these discussions, we have learned more about, there is, there are some statewide industry guidelines that have been developed by the hospitality industry in North Carolina that, they're informal, but they have been sort of accepted by the General Assembly as the practice for how these funds are, are to be invested. That, that formula recommends a 66-33% allocation. Lot of other towns and cities across the state do do it differently. But the statewide hotel industry, basically, their position is, if you want to do something different from that, like we probably will not support it, might lobby against it, they don't like the precedence of changing it. So, another issue is if we do go to 33% for community investments as opposed to just 25%, how can those funds be used? The current bill spells it out, and there's a lot of different restrictions on how it can be used. This Tourism Product Development Fund, ultimately the TDA makes these decisions, but the legislation itself restricts how they can be used in a lot of ways. It can only be used on capital funding for new projects. And so there's a lot of different kinds of things, like maintenance or any kind of operating funds. It can only go to nonprofits. So, there's a lot of restrictions on how it can be used. The state industry guidelines document simply says that the funds can be spent on anything as long as it's tourism-related. And it, and it allows the communities to decide how they want to define what is, what is tourist-related. So I think this is actually one of the most important points here, because the tourism industry's been growing so fast that I think it would be very unwise to, in the legislation itself, restrict how the funds can be used. What's, what's important now might look different in four or five years. And so we should, you know, ultimately, again, the TDA's making the decision, but the city council, the community, the county commission should be able to have input on that on an ongoing way to, you know, talk about what the priorities are going forward. So I think that's a very important point to, to stand behind. I think that there's other issues too. We don't need to go into all of them. I think those are some of the most important policy points that will need to be addressed one way or the other. My sense from these conversations is that the, the hotel industry, as I said, is willing to make some changes on the funding formula. I've heard a lot of support from the, from their sector that they want to restrict how the funds can be used. So that may be a place where, you know, there are some differences of opinion. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to share my thoughts on this, because there's been a lot of one-on-one conversations going on, but it, it kind of feels like it's time for this to be kind of brought to a more public level of discussion. And in terms of, in terms of this letter, you know, my thoughts were, you know, we still haven't really kind of settled on this issue as a commission yet. Like when are we going to adopt resolutions? When are we not? We do sometimes just create letters, you know, if there's common, commonality, folks who are, who are supportive can sign it, those who aren't, you know, there's, that's, that's fine too. So, I think it would be beneficial for the commission to, to let our legislators know what, what our thoughts are on this. So, that's the idea of the letter. If people have feedback on that, be happy to hear it. So any, any other folks who want to share their two cents on this? Because I know other folks have been in these different community conversations as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in there. You know, my, I was one of the ones that voted for the additional 2% and the 25-75 split. I don't think I was as concerned about the split, except that I wanted to make sure that, for me, I was excited about the fact that we would have 25% that would go towards capital projects. And that that money would be derived from a tax that is paid by 100% people outside of Buncombe County. During that, this short-time sense of vote, the, we have received substantial funding in Buncombe County, including the Woodford Greenway and Blue Way, the Inca Ballfields, expansion of the Buncombe County Sports Park, 14 million dollars. And that's only the ones that come to my memory. I know there's others. I'm, I'm sure I'm leaving some out. And so, to that point, the decision was a great decision to make. Because if we would have, if we would have done those projects, if we would have agreed at, at the county level that those were great projects and we should move forward those, then we would have funded all of those by property tax dollars. So that was the big reason that I voted for that. Since that time, there's been a lot of dialogue about the amount of money that has been generated, and should that money be adjusted? Should that mu, should there be a concern about it being that much money? And the answer to that is probably yes. Most of that is, that is a, it's, it's tourism-related, it's a tourism board, there's guidelines on who can be on that board. I'm on that board. Julie Mayfield is on that board. We are non-voting members, we just represent the county and the city to make sure, to just add, to, to advocate and to listen and to make sure there's equity throughout the county and that we feel comfortable in what the tourism board is, is doing. I think there's a lot of conversation recently about concern to, of infrastructure, particularly in the, in the, in the city, which I, I share that, I share that concern. I'm, I'm not sure that these, the, there, there seems to be a hang-up on the specific language at the state level and concern about the tourism board being specific. I know there's a lot of conversation about, about transit, about maybe even some of that, that transit could be tourism-related. And that some of that focus, some of that money could be directed towards that. And my, my concern is, is how do you do all that? If, if I was doing it, which I'm not, you know, and I, this tax is created by the, by the hotel industry, then, and I was within that group and I wanted to improve tourism, I wanted to improve transit related to tourism, then what I would probably advocate for, and maybe there needs to be, maybe there has to be, maybe this is a reason for there being some, you know, specific language in there, is that I would want the workers that I had in Inca, or I would want the workers that I had in Swananoa, to be able to, to expand the routes maybe to those areas where people could get on, get on the bus and come to work. Rather than, you know, the, the conversation that I've heard is a specific amount of money just comes out maybe for transit and goes to there, goes here. And I'm not hearing a lot of accountability regarding that. So, I think, from the marketing side of it, I've said this, and I think I've shared this with, with Chairman Newman, I'll share it out here now with, with everybody, is that, is that, I don't think there's much difference if you spend $20 million a year for, for advertising versus 19 million a year. I mean, that million dollars could go to, do a lot of work on the, the product development side and may not be necessary, you know, in, in the future. I mean, that, that's going to proportionally grow and it's going to get to a point where it's probably too much. Now, how we adjust that, I don't really have the answer for that. I think that the, I think the tourism board, the hoteliers are going to, at some point in time, going to make some presentation to the board, to us, I'm assuming.
About this?
Yeah. And we're going to have to agree with or disagree with it.
We'll see.
So what do you think's going to happen?
Well, the way they did it last time is they went to some powerful legislators who were not from Buncombe County, asked them to introduce the bill, and they went around us. And then they dropped it on our desk and said, "Hope you'll vote for it." And that was the process. And that's part of the reason, I think, so, so many people in the community are frankly really angry about this. Because I think people felt like it got jammed down their throat, that there's no accountability here. And, you know, we have the worst deal in the state. We have the, literally, if you, if, in terms of investment of funds as a percentage in community purposes versus TV ads, we've got the worst deal in the state. And I believe if we had voted it down four years ago, five years ago, the tourism industry wanted those funds so bad, because they knew all these new hotels were getting built. And they wanted the advertising to get more people to come. If we'd voted it down, they would have wanted to negotiate a better deal. And we could have gotten something different. But anyway, it has done some good, but...
It has done a lot of good.
As we've said before, Jasmine, we can do better, right?
Well, you know...
Well, I do think, yeah, I mean, I think...
So I hope they don't do that again. And I, I don't, I don't think they, I don't think they, I don't think that will happen. But that is how it happened last time. So that's part of why I believe it's important for us to discuss where we stand on this issue early in the process, rather than just coming in at the end.
Right. Yeah.
Joe, you done?
No, I'm not, but I'll let you go.
Okay. Brief intermission.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'm really glad we're talking about it. This is something that I would want to sign on to. I've been hearing from a lot of folks about this, and the range of things I hear go from, hey, we have like critical pressing problems in our community that we need to figure out some way to use public funds to address. And some people, and, you know, this is one of the first places people look. And I think it has to be said that some of the issues we're talking about, the need for expanded public transit, the need for maintenance of infrastructure and expansion of some basic infrastructure, if they can't be funded from a pot like this, the next place I think we go is debt servicing or property tax. I just think, to me, we, we're at a place where we just have to name that really clearly. And part of my motivation for us wanting to elevate this conversation is that I think from our shorter and longer-term policymaking perspective, we have a responsibility to get ahead of the freight train that is quickly coming at us. And part of that is growth and development, yes, but part of that is also just the wear and tear on public infrastructure, the demands placed on infrastructure. So that's one of the ways I look at this. I also just think about this from a perspective of parity across the state. We are a clear outlier. And I think that's a function of politics that happened five years ago. It's a new day, there's a new board here, our community's changed, the growth of the, the revenue generated from this has far outpaced what anyone would have projected in 2016. All those things to me say, we certainly should look a fresh, take a fresh look at this and look at it from a clear policymaking lens. But at the end of the day, you know, not everyone I'm hearing from is necessarily naming the occupancy tax issue, but almost everyone I talk with in our community today is in one way or another expressing the pains of struggling to make ends meet, or not being able to find housing, or being stuck in traffic every day, or not having the public transport they need. All these kind of circling issues that I think we kind of have to get ahead of. And I honestly think if more people knew that there was a $25 million fund of locally-generated tax dollars, $18 million of which were being used for advertising, that was being outsourced to a firm in Atlanta, I think, the more people know about this, the more folks will have real concerns about it. And I think those are valid concerns. So I'm glad we're taking it up. I would, I would like to sign on to this. I want us to be in discussion and dialogue. I think we do need to be realistic about what's possible in terms of the current, or the upcoming short cycle. But I want us to have those longer-term conversations. And to me, part of our job is to dovetail that longer-term conversation about what the proper, appropriate use of this tax fund is. We have our longer-term conversations and planning around land use, around how we're thinking about property tax in the years to come, how we're thinking about public transit, how we're thinking about affordable housing, all these big kind of issues that are, that we could tackle one by one in a very siloed way, but that in some moments, I think we have to kind of look at the whole picture of how are we funding and being strategic about using public funds to pay for the, the things our community wants, needs, and deserves.
I think what we need to look at is when we look at our community and we think about, and I've seen this all my life, folks, the tourism part is a big part of our, you know, community. Let's face it. But, let's face something else too. You know, in the 60s, in the early 70s, when I was in the Navy and said I was from Asheville, everybody thought I meant Nashville, Tennessee, and asked me if I liked country music. It was a different day and time. But today, when we were in Ireland, when we were in Europe, when we traveled anywhere in the world, not to mention the country, they all know where Asheville, North Carolina is. And my question is, do we still need to spend 50, I mean, over half of that money for advertising when it's out there now? You know, we keep it going, sure. But I think it would be only fair to spend 50-50. Because let's face it, with the hotels, it's 25 million now. In a few years, it'll be 30 million or more. But I think that's only fair, that we spend 50-50. And whatever the city, the county, we decide, we shouldn't have all those restrictions either. Because, look, the tourism affects every part of the city and county. The deputy sheriffs, whatever, when you look at the infrastructure, it all affects that. And that's why I think 50-50 is not unreasonable. And the other thing I don't like about it is, why is it that our representative and the city's representative are ex-official? We should have our vote too. The citizens of Buncombe County and the city of Asheville, as big as they are, we need to have our vote counted, not ex-official. But I think adding to the, I would like to see that added to the letter. Is it in there? Maybe I did...
No, I think it's a great point, Al. I did, on the section number three, it's the shortest section, I was...
Yeah.
Trying to, not to be too verbose in these others, but this one, maybe it's too short. It just says, it says, "Currently, the community voice is in decision-making. Currently, the makeup of the TDA is dominated by the hotel owners. We believe there should be more community voices added to the decision-making process, especially as it relates to the investments in the non-advertising funds." You know, I think how the advertising funds get spent, you know, that's kind of a business decision on how they think they get the most use of it. But for the funds that actually get invested in the community, I think that's where most peoples, they want to have input on that part.
But I still...
So I didn't, I didn't flesh out what that means, just kind of said, that's something that we should look at. And the way we do it here, again, is pretty different than most places. Most places do have a Tourism Development Authority.
Right.
But the makeup of that is oftentimes with a lot, I mean, the tourism industry, I think the state guidelines are that half the members should be from like tourism businesses, but, you know, but up to, up to half of the rest could be, you know, kind of community...
Right.
Community perspective.
So, I'll just, go ahead.
So I'll just, go ahead.
So I'm hearing much of the same and definitely in pockets concern that in order to address the infrastructure challenges that we're facing in our community, that property taxes will have to increase. And have continually been asked to look at alternative ways to avoid that property tax increase. I certainly think if we can make this much more equitable, and as Jasmine said, in parity with what's happening across the state, I think that can alleviate that. I think we absolutely have to look at the stressors that tourism is causing on our community. And even looking back at the presentation a few moments ago, the stress that that's putting on our emergency responders, our 911 call system, EMS, our firefighters, we absolutely have to take a look at that and ensure that those needs are being met by the number of folks that are visiting here. The one thing that I really do have to take a little pause with is, in talking with folks who do own locally-owned small businesses, the one thing that they do continue to come back and say is, there is no way that we could even budget to market our locally-owned business without these funds. So trying to shift that focus a little bit of, we do need to ensure that those businesses that are owned by people who may be our next-door neighbors do receive the marketing benefits to drive people into them versus driving people in to visit Asheville and to stay in a hotel. Because those local businesses, I mean, they're providing jobs and driving the economy for us. And I've also heard that from a number of folks in the arts community, that it's getting people into buying their art, that I'm not, I'm certainly not spending that amount of money on a weekend buying art. I wish I could, but I'm not. So just being very cognizant of the livelihood that those dollars are providing. But I do support this.
Robert, you got any thoughts you want to share on this? Anybody haven't spoken yet?
I'm just listening.
Yeah, it's fine.
I mean, like I say, you and Joe was the ones here five years ago, and, you know, I want to just get back to basic. It seems like they've done a great job. Does it need to be looked at? Definitely. You know, how much money was coming in three years, two years ago, three years ago? 15 million? So we have got to a point where it could go 66-33, or as Al says, 50-50. But I think we need to stay within, where do the dollars go on the, let's use tourism tax, you know, not on anything else? Using this extra money coming in can help where we don't have to raise property taxes, we're using it for something else that we don't have to fund. So I think we're kind of getting way, way off track as the more we talk about this is, yes, it has worked in the past. It's working great. Eventually, we're going to get to 30 million, but we're going to have money to do other things. So I believe we need to sit back and think, keep it a tourism tax dollar, and then find a way that it cuts us from having to spend money on greenways or something, because the greenways are attracting a lot of people here.
You know, one idea, and this is in the letter, and there's other ways to get at this, too. I mean, there's a lot of ways that you could work this. But one idea to kind of address what Commissioner Edwards is saying, but, you know, think about how to get more funding for community, infrastructure and other community needs would be to basically say, okay, look, you know, one compromise could be, we go to 66-33, split the revenue that way. We are at $25 million now. It's this huge pool of money. It's expected to grow, but you never know. I mean, we could have a recession in a couple of years, it could go down, you know? So it's not automatic that goes up.
That's right.
But we could say, as the revenue grows beyond 25 million, any additional growth beyond 25 million, let's split that revenue 50-50. And in that way, it's not reducing the advertising funds for the tourism sector, anything below what it would already be reduced by going to 66%, which I think there's buy-in for that. But as the pie grows, let's split that new growth 50-50. You're still going to get more advertising money than we have today, already a huge number. But as the sector grows, the community will feel more benefits from it as it grows into the future. So it is, you know, I think it's kind of a good solution in a lot of ways. It is different than the state guidelines. I mean, I think realistically, that's probably not a policy that is realistic that we're going to be able to get through the legislature this year. I think whatever goes through this year is probably going to need to conform to the state guidelines. Because I think the state Hotel Industry Association can basically say, you know, make a few phone calls and say, we're against it, and it just won't happen. So I think there's kind of the, what can we get done this year? But also kind of trying to define, where do we want to get to on this going forward? And that could be, you know, a solution that wouldn't worry people in the business community too much, who do rely on, you know, folks buying their, you know, not just the hotel people, but buying their retail products and things like that. That's right. But
One other thing, I appreciate Commissioner Edwards bringing that point, because people need to understand that this advertising money, which I agree with Commissioner Newman, that it has grown to a point where, you know, it's realistic to look at that. Now, whether this is exactly the way it ought to be, I don't know. I like 33-66. But it affects a whole lot more than hoteliers. This advertising, I mean, if you think about 20 years ago, and you think about the amount of businesses were here, the restaurants that were here, you know, the art, you know, everything across all service lines and consumables. I mean, people are, I mean, does anybody really like the fact that all these people are coming to Asheville? I doubt anybody in here is going to raise your hand, that we're all excited about the amount of people that come here, except the people that are making a living here. People that are making a living here, what they don't like, they love the people that are coming and spending the money. They just don't like the traffic, which I don't like, nobody likes. They don't like the concern, some of this is coming from the concern that some of the infrastructure in some areas, the city, because a lot of the, some of the downtown pressure has created a situation where either money is not available to spend, or we can't keep up with the money to be able to keep up with the improvements to the infrastructure. Is that a fair statement? Is that a fair statement?
Well, yeah, it is. Because, I mean, A, the city doesn't get any of the hotel tax money directly. They do apply for funds, like we do. They've got some good projects funded, you know, Civic Center, other stuff. But they don't get any of it directly. And the sales tax distribution, I think there's this widely-held misconception that all these people come here, they buy things, and the city gets that money. Because they bought, they did, I bought something in the city, I paid the sales tax, the city must get that. The reality is, they get very little of it. It actually benefits the county more
Oh, yeah.
Than the city. So in terms of taking care of these areas that are very high utilization of tourists, it really is true that it's not paying for itself.
Well, my only concern is, I just want to make sure that as we look at the formulas, that we have good, lengthy conversations about this. And that there's accountability, because, I mean, it's even been mentioned, that here's this fund, and it's a lot of money, and then now we want to be able to use it for this, this, and this. You know, for me, what excites me about that money is being able to utilize it in the county and the city and other areas to improve the destination to where it makes it a better place for people to live. And that's a real broad statement, and we'd have to have some accountability in that. Because my definition may be different than yours. And that's the only thing that concerns me. When we use terms like tourism-related, I just don't know what that means. And I'm hoping that we'll put some, either we will, or the hotel industry, or the state will put in some accountability in that, because I don't want to create something where people just start, you know, pounding that fund for money that it's not intended to be used for.
I think the idea, I think the idea of having a plan for how it's invested is a good idea. So I'm not saying there shouldn't be guidelines and some agreement on, you know, hey, here are a bunch of things that, you know, we as a community, and certainly the tourism industry, you know, has a lot of input on this, we would like to see funded over the next five to 10 years. But I think that should be decided here, you know, at the TDA. I mean, currently, the TDA can set those kind of policies. We can put in our opinion about it, you know, which is, you know, they can, you know, take it or leave it. But by deciding it locally, it can also be changed locally. You know, the TDA can, in three years from now, four years from now, can say, you know, there's some new things here that we didn't see then. They can adjust the plan. If you put it in the bill, we might be living with this thing for the next 10 or 20 years. And it ties our hands. So that's why I think it's so important that those policies get decided in a local plan, created with, you know, with the Tourism Development Authority, with community input, rather than getting put in a bill that's going to be, you know, potentially very difficult to change in the future. So this has been a good discussion. I don't want to cut it off. But we are past 4:00 now.
All right, we're done.
So any other kind of final thoughts on this for now? You know, you'll see, I dated this letter in the future. So the idea is like, this is, you know, kind of a working letter. But, you know, I do think it would be good for us to share our perspective. I'd be happy to welcome informal feedback on this, too, beyond the meeting today. But this has been a good discussion. So thanks for everyone's thoughts on this.
So last comment, I want to comment on Commissioner, on Al's about the voting versus non-voting. I've been on there for, I don't know, six years, whatever, a long time as a non-voting member. And I can tell you that during that time, it's like, you know, that based on input from the community and based on input from this board, we have been able to receive our share without even, without being a non-voting. So you can make, you can make an impact, you know, whether you have a vote or not. So I just want to make that point.
But I think when we have the vote, though, we don't have to worry about how it's going. You know, that gives us the equal footing of everybody else. But when we don't have, when we're ex-official, we're still at the mercy of the group as a whole. And I don't like that.
My sense is that there is interest in broadening the board. So that may be an area where there's agreement on, but we might not all agree on what's the best way to do that.
What's the best way?
So I think it's a topic that will be in the mix of these discussions, is my hunch. So, and it's not just about the ex-official question. It could be other community.
Right.
Right now, the board's almost entirely hotel owners, and there's like one kind of like non-hotel community position. But it could be broadened in other ways, too, in terms of just having kind of other, you know, just other perspectives at the table, too. All right. Thanks, everybody. We are a little over time, so let's adjourn this meeting, but we'll be back at 5:00 for our regular meeting.